Tommy, you about ready back there?
We're ready.
Is that Tommy? That's not Tommy.
Andrew.
Andrew. You want to wait for Sandy or we?
It don't matter.
All right. This is a special meeting of the Livingston Parish Council, today being May the 23rd, 2024. All public notices have been sent out Tuesday. The deadline to, I think, for the publication was Friday. We got it out in time, so. And let me, before we get started, I would like to say one thing for everyone that's in the room tonight, but mostly for those on TV. I did a little bit of reading today. I'll give you a quote from Thomas Jefferson in 1825, right about 200 years ago. He made this quote. He said, "When you're angry, count to 10 before you speak. When you're very angry, 100." So let's get started, Ms. Sandy. Before we get started, Mr. Coates, would you lead us in a prayer?
Sure.
Father, we ask that you bless us. We thank you for getting everyone here safely tonight. We hope that you give us the wisdom and the discernment to make good decisions for the people of our parish. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Ms. Sandy, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sandy. You want to call the roll to make sure we have a quorum here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Wascom.
Here.
Mr. Watts.
Here.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Shavers.
Here.
Mr. Coates.
Here.
Mr. Erdy.
Here.
Ms. Sandifer.
Here.
All right. This item was placed on the agenda to discuss retaining an attorney for a member of the Livingston Parish Council for a lawsuit against them personally during the course of their And then it says Harold Marcel Parker Jr. versus Livingston Parish Government and Joe Erdy, 21st Judicial Court. Actually, this item got placed on the agenda, I think, Mr. Coates had asked. So I'm just going to turn it over to Dean. I mean, you're the one that asked to put this on, asked me to put this, call this meeting, I believe.
Yes, sir. And actually, I believe that the agenda was misrepresented in how it was to be created. It's actually to represent the council in the proceedings against us by Mr. Parker, rather than single out Mr. Joe.
Well, it says on here, a member, okay, a member, okay, go ahead.
Yes. So I just wanted to say that and.
Well, it says Harold Parker versus Livingston Parish Government and Joe Erdy. So it's, it does say both of them.
Okay. Well, I know that under Section 4-02 Legal Departments B, it doesn't talk about anything about retaining a council for an individual council member. So the council's being sued as well, basically on the same merits. So we just hire that person for the council itself. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay, so your initial request was to me to authorize the, to have a meeting to authorize the council to hire Mr. Erdy, special counsel, I believe. That's what you initially asked me about Thursday.
Okay.
And now you're saying you want to get a counsel, legal representation for the whole council?
What I'm saying is, yes, it was misstated, and it was my error. But yes, this is to hire a representative for the entire council, because the entire council is involved in this lawsuit. And under Section B, no special legal counsel shall be retained by the parish government except for a contract for a specific purpose approved by a favorable vote of the majority of the authorized membership of the council.
Are you looking, is that in the Home Rule Charter?
That is absolutely in the Home Rule Charter.
That's in the Home Rule Charter. It says, and that does give us the right to hire special counsel.
Absolutely.
Okay, I was, I was under a different idea of what this meeting was about. I thought it was to, as per your request, I thought it was to authorize the parish to pay for legal counsel just specifically for Mr. Erdy, but that's not it.
I don't know the legality on hiring an attorney to represent a specific member in a personal lawsuit. I don't even think that would be legal to do.
Okay.
So, yes, what we're doing is trying to get representation for the entire council in this lawsuit.
And I do know that currently, so I'm going to address that, what I know, and this caught me by surprise, I'm going to address what I know that the Livingston Parish, and Mr. Brad probably knows about it since he's our legal representation. We did get, the parish council did, was it, it was against the parish, the whole parish government, I believe. Mr. Marcel Parker's suit was against the government, wasn't it?
Correct, and I believe Mr. Erdy individually.
So it was against the government, the parish, the parish governing authority and Mr. Erdy separately? Okay.
Correct, because on the agenda, it says retaining an attorney for a member of the Livingston Parish Council for a lawsuit against them personally during the course of their duties.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I guess the question would be this then, Mr. Cassio. Do we need to lift the agenda to bring in this other issue?
I believe so, because now we're doing a totally separate thing than what was advertised for.
Make the motion.
I guess I'm.
All right, I make a motion to lift the agenda.
I'm confused, and so what are we going to discuss that's not on this agenda?
Well, it's my interpretation of what is on the agenda is actually still within the same framework of what it says it is, because it's not, it's not in a situation so that it says it's going to represent the council, and we're changing that to represent something that's outside the law. What we're actually doing is, it says in here to discuss retaining an attorney for a member of the Livingston Parish Council, which we are all members of, for a lawsuit for, against them personally. Okay, so, yes, I guess.
So there's no need to lift the agenda then, is it? I mean.
I don't see a need to, but Mr. Cassio is thinking we should.
If you're going to be taking action other than what's on the agenda.
It seems to me like what's on the agenda.
Pretty much same thing.
No, it's different.
On the agenda, it reads to have an attorney represent a member of the council in his personal capacity. What you're asking to do is to appoint special attorneys to represent the council as a whole, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's different than what's on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll just lift the agenda.
So you, just make the motion and I'll say.
I'll make the motion to lift the agenda.
I second. To do what now?
To lift the agenda to discuss the topic of hiring a special attorney to represent the council in this lawsuit matter with Mr. Parker.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Coates, second by Mr. Shavers. Let me ask a question. We, the same Home Rule Charter says that the district attorney is representing this parish council in that lawsuit. Why do we need another attorney?
That's what we're taking a vote on.
No, we're taking a vote on lifting the agenda to talk about that.
But some that we can talk about the other, yes.
I think what Mr. John is trying to tell you, sir, is that it has to be a unanimous vote to lift the agenda, and if he chooses not to vote to lift the agenda, then you can't address that item. Doesn't matter to me what we do.
So I'm just, you've got to convince me why we need legal counsel when we have legal counsel in our Home Rule Charter to defend us in this lawsuit.
All right. Yeah? Let's make just one statement.
If you want to go first, absolutely.
I mean, wait a minute, can we discuss it? Because it's not only you.
I wouldn't discuss particularities in an open session about a pending matter, like pending litigation. I wouldn't discuss anything factually or strategically, because then you're going to be letting out privileged and confidential information. I will say that. So I don't know what y'all want to discuss as far as the merits on the decision.
Apparently, it appears that we're being asked why we feel we should go with a different set of attorneys, which is going to get very complicated here very shortly if we do that.
Don't we have, don't we have the right, according to the Home Rule Charter, to decide?
We do, but now we have to lift the agenda. That's the problem.
Now, you definitely have the ability to hire a special counsel to handle particular matters. That's totally.
But you're talking, I thought we were here to discuss, what you told me was to discuss attorney for Mr. Erdy. That's what you told me. Now, you're telling me we're not going to discuss that, we're going to discuss hiring another attorney to represent the council.
That's correct.
And I'm just curious, because to lift that agenda, we need a majority vote.
We absolutely do.
And I want to know why we need, why do you think we need other counsel other than Mr. Cassio or District Attorney's Office?
Mr. Cassio, do you suggest that we speak about this?
If it's, I wouldn't discuss anything in particular about the pending litigation. Anything that's facts related to this litigation or the allegations or the strategy in which we're taking and defending it should not be discussed in open, in an open meeting.
Can we, can we just bring it to a vote to decide if we can hire another attorney outside of y'all?
You can, you're allowed to do that.
That's what, that's what I want to know.
It's up to y'all if you want to, but you're definitely allowed to.
Just let it go down to a vote.
You have to lift the agenda, though.
Well, you have, you have to lift, under this agenda item, no, you cannot. You're going to have to lift the agenda.
Okay, let me ask this question. Can we amend the motion to make it satisfactory to what we're trying to accomplish?
It's a totally different item, though, than what's on the agenda. That's, that's my concern.
Well, okay, can I say, can I speak? I want to say something.
Oh, Ms. Sandifer, you have the floor.
I don't have the agenda, by the way. I would really like a copy of the agenda.
I can read it.
But my question is, because Mr. Erdy is a legislator, there are legislative immunity is a factor here. So could it be amended in such a way, because he is, you know, really could be represented by, who we currently have, and a motion that, that would motion the court to make them aware of legislative immunity. So it would be a personal concern, which does qualify for the.
No, so because he's being.
Sorry.
Because he's being sued in his personal capacity, the current law. Now, look, the same defense that we're bringing is the same defense that he has, and I spoke with Mr. Moody about it, and we'd be happy to handle that, because the hearing is tomorrow. And so I don't know if, again, I came into this thinking that we were trying to get him his own attorney.
That's what I was told. Matter of fact, I heard we had to do it today. That's why we called a special meeting, because his hearing was tomorrow. So that's why we're here tonight, to deal with this issue. And you just threw me for a curve.
I think that both issues are kind of commingled.
I'm going to read this agenda item, just to make sure that everybody in La La Land out there understands what is worded on the agenda item number five.
I think we've already read it several times.
I'm going to read it again. "To discuss retaining an attorney for a member of the Livingston Parish Council for a lawsuit against them personally during the course of their duties." And then it references the thing. So I don't see how we can do anything with it other than lift the agenda. We're going to have to lift the agenda to do what you're trying to do, and that is to hire a council, not for a council member, but for the council. So we got to lift the agenda to do that.
Is it a problem to lift the agenda?
I understand. I'm just kidding, he made the motion. Why don't we disposs.
It shouldn't even be in discussion anymore.
Well, no, we are supposed to be in discussion, because a discussion comes after a second. It comes after a second, Mr. Coates, you were wrong there, okay? I'm just saying. I'm being very amicable, as your word, but I just wanted to clarify that we are in order here.
It appeared you were getting a little excited.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Calm down.
I'm just letting you know that when there's a, when there's a motion, there's a second, then there's a discussion. Up until then, there's, discussion would be out of place.
Right.
I'm just, so you were wrong to say that you're not supposed to have a discussion.
I don't mind admitting when I'm wrong.
Okay. All right, well, we got a motion to lift the agenda, to change that, to discuss something different, so Ms. Sandy, you want to call for the vote?
Mr. Wascom.
No.
Mr. Watts.
No.
Mr. Goff.
Yes.
Mr. Mangus.
Yes.
Mr. Shavers.
Yes.
Mr. Coates.
Yes.
Mr. Erdy.
Yes.
Ms. Sandifer.
Yes.
All right, that motion failed because we have more than one person, because there was a no vote, so we're not going to lift the agenda. Now, Mr. Coates, do you want to talk about retaining attorney for Mr. Joe Erdy tonight? You want to discuss what you have on the agenda here to obtain an attorney for Mr. Erdy, or do you not want to discuss that?
Mr. Cassio, is that legal to do?
It's on the agenda to discuss.
That's not what I'm asking, I'm asking the legality.
Is it legally to actually, is it legal to actually do it?
Yes.
Okay, so the law, as it states, is, is that he's going to have to retain his own lawyer, and then in the event that he is successful, the parish can, but doesn't have to reimburse him for the legal expenses.
That's correct. The best that I remember.
There's certain state agencies that are covered individuals, but local government officials are not, and there's no, there's no actual statutes on point, it's all just what's been done. And the AG's opinions and the law on it that's applicable to this is that you can't pay for it upfront, but if he's successful, the parish can, but doesn't have to reimburse or indemnify him for his legal expenses and cost.
As food for thought, I have a quick question, if I can.
Let's go.
Hypothetically, if it, if it would have passed, if it would have passed, and we would have lifted the agenda, part of that is you have to have a contract with them. Do we have a contract available for us to prove?
Yes, we do.
And you have a dollar amount?
Yes.
I would like to, I mean, after the meeting, if you could share that with me. I haven't seen that, and I didn't know if you had that or not, but I know that that's part of the requirements and the guidelines that, that even if we would have got.
I'd be glad to share that with you.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay. So that's, that would be a contract to hire legal counsel for, for the council or just yourself?
Counsel.
Just for the council? Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that, even if we got past that hurdle, that you still had the rest of the stuff in, in place, ready to go.
See, okay, I was just on the impression that this was.
I believe 100% after talking to Smitty this morning, I feel a little bit better about possibly having a chance to win this, or at least have a good fight at it. Y'all know my feelings on this from jump. We're in the middle of a lawsuit I don't think we should be in the middle of to start with. But I know there's a lot of people on this council that don't feel comfortable about Mr. Moody. I've had my own difficulties with Mr. Moody, but he is going to do his very best, whatever case he fights. And I think, I'd be curious to see what your contract rate would be, because I would doubt very seriously, we would probably call, it would probably cost us more money. But that's just where I'm at. I think we just move forward the way it is. I think we got a good attorney that's going to fight for us, but that's the way it's going to go, it looks like.
So Joe Erdy is being sued personally. He's wanting his own attorney. He does not want Moody Law Firm representing him personally. So there's two lawsuits.
Joe can hire anybody that he wishes.
Right, but there's two lawsuits, one against the council and one against Joe Erdy personally. So, Mr. Joe, what Ricky is saying is, is you've moved forward with your personal attorney. He's not saying that you have to use Moody. I would personally not like to use Moody to represent me, but that's just my personal opinion.
He's not, he's not going to represent me.
And that, that's what Ricky Goff is saying.
And that's your decision as a whole, like, like I told you the other day, you can get whoever you wish, and as, as Brad pointed out, that once it's all over with and done, and you actually win the case, then it proves your point that you were correct in your actions. If you lose the case, then this council really can't pay. That's why we don't, that's why the bills are not paid in advance. That's why we don't hire your attorney in advance.
You have to prove that you were within your bounds, and then this council has the opportunity to vote to repay your, your legal fees. And I'll be the first one to tell you that I would, I would support that.
How does the bonding come into effect on that? Because we do have insurance, right?
Yeah, you, you could ask Mr. Cassio that, and I think Ms. Sandy or Mr. McMorris might have more information regarding that. Do you have any information on the bonding, how that would play in, Mickey?
Mickey McMorris, and Brad can probably help me out on, on this as well, but a bond, it actually preserves the monetary value for the parish. It, it does not represent you in any way. So if you did something to harm the parish, then the parish could recoup that money. Say you took some, I don't know, say, say it's ruled, we're just hypothetical here, that you did something wrong, and the parish had to pay $100,000 to this individual, then the bond would, would pay the parish $100,000.
We had looked into, and I've been through some of these battles, but we had looked into errors and admissions is what you're looking for. Errors and admissions would cover Mr. Joe in this situation. But the errors and admission insurance, and we can look at it again, was like $400,000, $500,000.
We have moved on that, but the, the application process was quite extensive, so we have submitted that to the, to Gallagher Insurance, and they are currently, I guess, bringing an estimate, but, I mean, it is, it is a very difficult insurance. I don't even know if you've ever seen it.
There's policy, no, sir, I'm not.
Or any policy on, on public officials.
Would it be retroactive, or would it be whatever?
I highly doubt if it'd be. They're going to write it retroactive.
No, I've never seen anybody write a policy retroactive.
So is Mr. Erdy as well as the rest of us? Are, are we bonded for suits like this?
You are definitely bonded, but that's to protect the parish, not you individually.
It's not errors and admissions.
So when somebody comes in and threatens you personally?
That's why I said I would be the first one. That's why I said I would be the first one to support Mr. Erdy if Mr. Erdy wins, right? Because I would wish and hope that the same thing would happen with the rest of this council, if y'all get into a situation where you have to fight a lawsuit and put forth your own funds to, to do that, and was successful basically stating that, yes, you did exactly what you were supposed to do in your capacity, that at that point, then we should.
Does anybody realize, if y'all haven't read it, or y'all, y'all know, that if I would win this lawsuit, the damage that'll be done here?
Say that again.
There'd be repercussions.
If you win?
If I win.
The damage that?
It'll affect this council.
By you winning?
By you winning?
By me winning.
I don't understand.
Because it goes down to that, the issue here is about the appointee, the appointee. And in this paperwork that I got, that I've consulted with another attorney, if I can't say that, y'all, cut me off, tell me what I can and can't say. But then, what, if I, if I would, I don't want to say this and get it right. I think, I think I worded backwards, because if, if I win, it proves that I did everything right in, in my appointee situation. And, and that, it states in here about the presence that, how, how do I want to get this right? I think I want to, because it says here that every person who was appointed, that's like the same night that I made this appointment, there was another situation where names are not necessary, and the people are not necessary to be here. And it could, it could come, if we don't get this straight and, and get the right council to do it right, then we have to go back to the first of the year and rescind everything. That, that can happen, if this thing goes the wrong way. I'm trying to, if I want to say yes or no, but I'm just saying that if I, that if I proved my case, then, that I was right, then I think we're okay, okay to appoint, but all the appointees that were made from the day we took office could be all illegal in my consultation, every single one, because the statement is that he wasn't notified and he wasn't here. So that's, is that violating the open court meeting?
That's only for that particular board.
And the removal of him.
And the removal from, that, that's a board that, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a state board, right?
That's my understanding.
Yes, but we now have documentation that.
Let's not, let's not go too far into this case.
But I think Mr. Moody.
But I do think there's going to, there's a distinction between what happened there. I don't see necessarily how this is going to affect any other appointment one way or the other.
Because it's based on the removal, it's not on the appointment, but it is what it is. If it is, then we just have to address each one of them, and we've only been here six months.
I have a question for the chair.
Absolutely, Mr. Coates.
Okay, what method do we have in place? Because this has happened a couple times, that if you fill out the agenda, if you make an item on the agenda and it's incorrect, how do you correct that item?
Well, you just get it right before you put it on the agenda.
Okay, but in this situation, Mr. Erdy received a suit on Thursday evening.
Correct.
And we had an agenda or a meeting that night, and they had to get it out the next day. So it was done quicker than what would have been preferred, preferred to happen.
Right.
But so the question that I'm asking is, in the event something is, an item is pulling the agenda and it's incorrect, how do you correct it? The only way I know of is.
I'm asking Mr. Wascom.
Well, I'll defer, I'm, I'm confused. He might have the right answer.
The only way that I know of is to do an addendum, because it's before the actual meeting itself, you can do an addendum, and she has a certain amount of time to get that out as well, you're there. And then the second recourse that you have is to get the agenda lifted and put the item on the, on the thing. I don't know if you tried to do the addendum or not, but you did try to do the. There was no time to do an addendum. I'm sorry. And that's what I'm saying, there's not enough time, there's just not enough time. But that's, as far as I know, that's about the only, about the only thing that you got to be able to notify the public in time. I think that's what the question is. Other than that, you can lift the agenda like right now, when the meeting's called, public notice was given, you can lift the agenda if you get the votes.
Let me ask a question. I think I sorted it out and had, I was confused while I went, I apologize. If I would lose because of the method that I did in removing Mr. Marcel.
And the damage.
And, and then replaced, and if I, if I would lose that, that way, that we, according to what I've got here and talking to the person I talked to, that all the appointees from, since we took office, have, not all of them, but the ones that were not present here, that, they'd all have to be redone. I, I was consulting, and we would have to go back to the beginning and undo everything. And that's where I'm going to go with this, if, if I have to. I'm just telling y'all, and I'm, I'm getting sound advice from somebody that's smarter than all of us put together in this room. So, and that's where I'm headed. You know, it's, it's not going to be Mr. Cassio, it's not going to be Mr. Moody representing me. I'll do it by myself if I have to, but I do have an attorney in mind. And it could affect the past of what we did, because I don't think I did anything wrong, and it's been done that way. And we pulled it up through numerous meetings, that we did the exact same thing that I did, the exact same thing, but now because that guy wants to sue to get his spot back, I'm wrong, when it was done many times by many people in there, and it's going to come back and bite us, I'm telling y'all.
Did you have something, Ms. Mangus?
Ms. Teal, what's the time, in the past, what's the time for constraint for an addendum?
24 hours in advance of the meeting. So if the meeting is at 4:00, it would have to be 24 hours.
Okay, so we.
Like on Thursday at 4:00.
What about an emergency ordinance?
Emergency ordinance is as soon as you can get it out, or emergency meeting, not emergency ordinance, that's different. An emergency meeting is, and there's a criteria in the Home Rule Charter that sets an emergency meeting, like an act of God coming or, yeah.
Because the other option under, under parliamentary procedure, we could have done, but the timeliness wouldn't come into it, is you could have just then put this the way you wanted it worded on the regular agenda, but that isn't going to be till June 13th. So, once we realized that it wasn't worded correctly.
Do you want to discuss hiring separate legal representation for the council at the next parish council meeting?
It'll be the 13th.
Yeah, I mean, what, what dates do we have coming up? Any court dates between now and then?
Tomorrow.
I mean, other than Joe's deal?
No, I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of.
Is tomorrow, is the council included in that as well, tomorrow?
Let me pull up the.
And I have a question, too, while he's pulling that up. The library board and the tourism board, what are the two differences between those as far as the governing of them? Does anybody know? Is it the same?
No.
No?
I don't know, can we discuss that at this? Because that's not on the agenda, sorry, it'd be difficult, but...
In light of what I, a little bit of what I've learned today, when I say we have a glimmer of hope, it is kind of around the way it's structured, because of an act and then another act. But as I understand it, just Ricky's thought, Ricky's two cents, is the library board is directly governed by this, this, this council. So if the library, the assessment and all that stuff, we're gonna roll their millage back, I'm gonna ask for it to be rolled back. So that, we have that authority, we have that power. We have none of that authority and none of that power with the tourism board. They have to actually go to the legislative body to get that approved. Now, there is some stuff in there that's gonna come out in this case that, that might tweak a little bit, first time I've ever heard of it, but it's possibly that it's there, it's gonna be our glimmer of hope, if you will, for us to win this. But the library board is a, a state entity, you know, far as they have some say, but it's very minimum, it's all, the majority of it is because we're the governing authority, and the purse strings, if you will, you know, we have a whole lot more authority based on this Home Rule Charter.
The reason why I was asking is because I was gonna see if anybody could remember, not talking about the case, but I'm talking about this library board, if, if it's, if it's structured the same way as a tourism board, of any time where a board member was pulled off of the library out of term, if they were governed the same, but it doesn't sound like they are.
The tourism board had a member specifically on that board that was removed, I was one of the members of that board at the time. I sent that information to Mr. Dean, also sent a copy of it, I think, or made sure Mr. Joe had it. But basically, the, the tourism board has bylaws that govern what it takes if you are not adhering to the meetings, like if you don't come to three consecutive meetings, or you're not there, you're not, if you're just a dead lump, taking up, or not really even taking up a seat, then that board, as the tourism board, can remove that person. Once they remove that person, they send notification to this council, which reappoints a new member. So that's what I've said from jump, is like, is there a mechanism for this council? And there is a mechanism for us to remove someone, and it's state law on any board, that if they have a felony, I don't know, you probably remember Dean, but if there's a felony, if there's certain malfeasance in office, this, that, and another, you can actually supersede what the, the board, and have them removed, because state law gives you that oversee, if you will. If they are doing these things, they, they don't sit on no board.
I was just trying to pull a specific or similar situation that has happened in the past, and what happened with that situation.
That gentleman was removed from the board, he came back to this council, I think it's even documented minutes, and then we reappointed a new person. We have a, we have a stipulation in our charter, and Mr. Goff and I disagree on what that leads to, so...
All right. If, if there's nothing else to discuss, is, I guess the only thing left would be a motion to adjourn, unless someone has any action you want to take?
Well, I'm just, I'm assuming that maybe y'all are assuming where my council's gonna be, but...
Or what?
Where my council representation would be, but it's not gonna be with Casio and Moody. They're not gonna represent me.
They will represent us on the council suit, but they will not represent you personally, is what you're saying.
That's right.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, one more question to Mr. Casio.
Yes, sir.
What are the chances of y'all getting a continuance tomorrow?
Probably not great. I mean, I don't know.
For what reason?
I mean, what would be the reason for the continuance? We, the service was done timely, an answer was filed.
Okay.
I guess, we'd have to have a compelling reason. Now, if Mr. Erdy were to hire his own attorney, his own attorney could request a continuance, meaning that he's just enrolling, and I think that would be the most likely way to get one.
Yeah, I agree with you. I just didn't know if...
But I think coming from, coming from us, it, I don't, I don't know of any compelling reason that I'm aware of that we would be able to get one.
Okay.
Short of something happening between now and tomorrow. However, if Mr. Erdy's attorney were to enroll and file a continuance, the judge could grant that one.
And then again, if Mr. Erdy does not have an attorney by tomorrow, when he has a court date, he could represent himself and apply for a continuance, correct?
He, he could ask.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be up to the judge's discretion, you know, we have no control over that.
I mean, in the district attorney, I mean, I know Mr. Joe's, is gonna go get a separate attorney, but wouldn't, if he didn't, and, and he said, hey, I want y'all to represent me tomorrow, y'all still would be there to do that.
Yeah, it's the same argument.
So I mean, you're still, you're representing him now, whether he chooses to...
Correct.
To put you to work or not, is, is, but, I mean, you could, you could be there tomorrow to represent him.
I mean, it's essentially the same stance, the same, the same argument.
He would be representing, but the fact is that they're up to speed. And to Dean's point, if it's a new council, or Mr. Erdy standing on his own, that he needs more time.
Yeah.
As an individual, because they've, they've been up to speed. You gotta throw another curveball in there to get it pushed back.
I probably will ask for a continuance, and if I don't get it, I'll just represent myself. That's it. And we'll see what happens.
Motion to adjourn.
Hang on a minute. I think that's sad, because every single council sitting up here could end up in those same shoes. Just remember that. That's all I wanted to say.
You know, I don't want any council members to be sued personally. I mean, I personally was sued last year by the same law firm that's suing Mr. Joe Erdy right now. I got served on, as, you know, and, and the district attorney represented me and, and worked through it, and Scott, Perloo, and Chris, and Brad, and, and they got it out of it, you know, and got us out of it. If you don't feel comfortable with them, I understand. I mean, that's, that's perfectly fine, and I don't want any of our, my fellow council members to be sued personally and to get any, I would never want that. And, and, you know, so, I mean, I don't think anybody, I would hope nobody, which wishes anybody up here to get sued and be found guilty, you know, because anybody can be sued for anything, but, you know...
Not guilty, but... Not guilty, but...
What's the word?
Liable.
Liable, yeah, okay, liable, thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm gonna make a real quick comment about it being sad. There's nothing that we can do, Ms. Aaron, that it's on the agenda for us to talk about hiring Mr. Erdy's personal attorney, but we can't do that, the only thing we can do is refund his bills if he wins.
Yes, I understand. Thank you so much for your thoughts. I'm good.
Okay, now let me finish.
Of course, Mr. Goff.
Thank you.
Seven down now.
I'm counting to 10. 19, whatever it is. The, the fact that the agenda didn't get lifted, didn't allow us to change the attorney for the council as a whole, not sure if that's where your issue is or not, but in reference to Mr., Mr. Joe, Mr. Erdy, I agree 100%. It's a sad day that any councilman has to get sued for whatever it is, that they're trying their best, put their name on the line, they set up here and they take shots, and everything else, and then they end up in a lawsuit. That's why I made a statement that if Mr. Erdy is successful, I'll be the first one to say, I'm, I'm supporting the repayment of his fees within a reasonable amount.
I understand.
But other than that, there's nothing else that we can do.
I don't understand why, why legislative immunity hasn't been, why the court hasn't been motioning that yet. Now, I haven't read into it that closely, but I'll go back and look at that, and...
But you want to instruct this gentleman here, since he works for us, to look into that?
I don't know if we're supposed to get into that right now.
I don't want to get into it, but it doesn't apply in this capacity.
Okay.
Is it, is that because, pardon my naivete, but is that because it wasn't an ordinance?
I don't want to get too, too far into this right now.
Okay.
But I'll definitely be open to discussing it later.
I would like to understand it better, and understand when it applies, when it doesn't apply, just from an educational standpoint. I'd definitely, definitely like to understand that.
When is later?
Not on the record, I don't want to discuss the pending litigation in an open meeting on the rest of...
Legal strategy, right.
Right, yeah. I don't want to get into the facts of this and the, and what's going on. I mean, it's just, it's not beneficial.
Ms. Motion, Coats, motion to adjourn still standing, is there a second?
No adjourn.
Any more discussion?